Wonderful to hear the lively exchanges and holiday cheer. So, we're gonna start for Wednesday, December 5th. We're starting at 6:00 PM. SES Library, Centipi School District Meeting. So, calling us to order, we can go to, let's start roll call this way and work our way down.
Russ Holden, Superintendent.
Jesse Tyler, School Board.
Jim Borelli, School Board.
Brian Garland, School Board.
Scott Rixman, School Board.
Sean Munnigan, Principal, Sunapee Elementary School.
Megan Hearn, Assistant Principal, Sunapee Elementary School.
Karen Gere, Director of Student Services.
Jody Bergen, Principal, Sunapee Central Elementary School.
Alright, thank you. And go to Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. We are the leaders of the United States of America and the Republic of America. We are one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, we are going to start on a whole bunch of minutes. It's been very active with committees and prior board minutes. So, I am looking for a motion for approval of school board meeting minutes for November 7th, Board Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 7th, 2018, School Board Meeting.
Seeking a second?
Second motion.
Scott, thank you. Alright, any discussion, corrections, anything, any comments around that? None? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. I like the hand wave for the folks watching at home, if you guys don't mind.
One abstention, if you don't mind.
One abstention from the traveling school board member who didn't attend, and I knew that in just a second, thank you for the nudge. So, one abstention. So, with three. Ed wants to be here, he hopes to show up here, but he had to work, so when that happens, life happens, so we're hoping to see him later in the meeting, but that's why he's not here. So, that passes, the three of us. Next on is approval of school board meeting minutes for the budget work session on November 6th. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion, Jim.
Alright.
For the school board budget work session, November 6th, 2018.
I'll second Jim's motion.
Okay. Motion by Jim, second by Scott, who was there as well, the notes look good. So, all in favor?
Aye.
One abstention? Getting it down, see that?
Thank you.
Seeking approval for school board meeting minutes for the SES Facility Subcommittee Meeting on the 28th, November 28th, 2018. You and I, so you want a motion or a second?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the SES Facility Subcommittee Meeting, November 28th, 2018.
And I will second, as the other one that was there and read the notes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We do have a consensus.
What's that?
We just have a consensus.
Consensus, yeah. We're fine, we're gonna keep moving. Sorry, thank you. Minutes of the Policy Committee on November 28th. Scott, you want to?
I'll make a motion to approve those matters.
Alright, second?
I'll second the minutes of the Policy Committee from November 28th, 2018.
Alright, so consensus there, folks that attended, thank you. Moving on to the Agenda Review. Any additions or comments, Kelly or Russ, any developments since this was done? Anything for you guys for additions or comments?
Yep.
Okay. So, we're gonna move to the public participation in the school board meeting. If folks have thoughts to share, a yellow X in response to a vocal citizen, to ensure that our audio quality has improved, there is a visible effort that we're making, an effort to improve it. So, yes, so we just wanna make sure for Minette and anyone else, we, Minette helped us point out that we had a gap that was totally unintended, we apologize, and we're working to fix that. So, if you don't have a comment, please go to the yellow X. Seeing no motion, we're gonna move forward to the updates. We are missing our student rep. She give you any updates to pass on?
No, me, he and I talked a little bit about basketball playing, he was, maybe later on. I can start with the baseball league if you want.
Sure.
For fun. I hope, I hope his bird is the same, it's been a choppy month, because the first time in my educational career, we had three snow days before Thanksgiving. So, we kind of, with the Thanksgiving break, then three snow days, it was kind of a choppy month. But we still have some good news, Manny Guyerson is selected to be all state in. Last week, we had Whitney Hampshire come in to speak about the dangers of vaping. You know, Mars is well attended, I think it's difficult sometimes with, you know, our kids are busy, our parents are busy, they're threatening one activity to next. But we had a good 25 parents who came, so it was a nice evening, well attended. You know, one of the unfortunate consequences of the snow, we had Beauty and the Beast the week of Thanksgiving, and usually when we have winter activities, we usually have a snow date. But for November 19th event, we did not plan a snow date in there. And so, we ran, unfortunately, we had a Monday night meeting, Tuesday night was canceled, Wednesday night, too many of the task members were going to Thanksgiving, and then we rented a number of the costumes that had to be returned. So, hopefully, that was just a quirk in the weather that would, you know, usually that day works pretty well. It was very well attended for the Monday evening, unfortunately, we had a second, but a good job for the students in doing reading in the beach. With mock product competition last year, the mock product team, you know, made the, you know, to the final day, the first time they've done that. So, they have their first competition this weekend, it's gonna be tomorrow evening, and students are getting ready for one of, I would say, one of the best days of the year, the day before our holiday break, with a lot of student led workshops. And so, we're preparing for that.
That's great. So, I wasn't able to make the vaping meeting, I was curious to hear more, just to get more folks who aren't familiar with it. I went to one in the library, did a really nice job?
I'm sorry?
The one at the library?
Yes.
Did it have similar kind of message in meeting, just about the?
Yeah, I think this, this one was more, I think, really focused specifically on the vaping and the increase that you've seen in the advertisement and the dangers that are apparent to it, that gets often times don't even know. So, just the, you know, things along the lines of nicotine is just much higher now, that they're putting in that is very addictive. They're very much being marketed towards kids, just with the flavors, things along those lines. So, it was very specific to vaping, as opposed to, I think the last one was much broader with the drum and all. This one has vaping and the use of drugs through the baked products. But it was, it was informative, I certainly think it was informative.
Yeah, 25, you felt good about that?
So, did 25 members? Yeah.
Great. Any questions on the boards? Okay, thanks. Jody?
We as well had a disruption to our drama program. Our fall drama, which was Fairy Tale Shorts, was presented to community and family, we had packed house, so it was getting too small for that. We had a packed house on Thursday night, but then we had snow day on Friday, so we didn't present to the students. And then it was rescheduled for Tuesday, and we had a snow day, and then we went to the students, and then we're like, we're moving on. So, that was disappointing for those who had worked so hard on that, to not be able to present to their peers, but we're, like a trio, we're, I'm gonna have a five day week this week, so we're excited about that. Our annual holiday concert is on Thursday, December 13th, at 6:00 PM, in the Sherburne Gym, and as always, we look forward to the entire community to coming, to come out for that. It's always a packed house at the Sherburne Gym. Our social emotional learning group has been working with local photographer Paul Howe to learn some of the aspects of photography. They're learning about framing and imposing, and they're actually the group that's going to be creating our yearbook this year, so he's helping them with all of those pieces to layout and things like that, so they're really excited about that, they're learning a lot.
That's great, thanks. Any questions for Jody? Yeah, the comments from both, from my son at home and several of his friends, where you can't have a snow day in Centipi until around, somebody asked me something about that, so. To have three underway.
We agree.
Yes, we like that.
It was great dismay among the skiing families. Thanks for the updates from both of you. Alright, Russ, Superintendent update, please.
Well, I think we've talked enough about snow days, but Sean says, my first time in 30 more days of education, I have ever had a call, a snow day, or even seen a snow day called before that period. So, we'll continue to monitor that and look at that as we progress through the winter. We do have the option, because we have our kids in school so long, I think we'll be okay, I'm not very vocal in July, we'll cover our, I was mandated by the Department of Education, so I'm not too concerned. We end up having five or six days, we'll be all set, so I was covering what is required of us, by the Department of Defense. At the SCU, just working on wrapping up the budget, wrapping up negotiations, wrapping up the warrant articles, preparing for upcoming open houses. Sean talked about the vaping, I want to put a quick thank you to Senator Montague for our social work, organizing that, working with Sean, working with Jean Gayville, the woman who came in, was an excellent speaker, I thought. I hope that we can potentially maybe get her in and have her talk about kids. And just echo what Jody said, if you need to get in the holiday spirit next Tuesday and Thursday, get to a holiday concert.
What time is that next week? The concerts, everybody here says?
Elementary school is, is the 13th.
Six, right?
Yep.
Your elementary school's on Tuesday at 6:30.
Alright, thank you, Russ. Policy, the policy Subcommittee, and they've been very busy, a couple Subcommittee's, a lot going on. So, there's a lot of information to cover, it's on the packets. I mean, we, we read it, we read the whole packet, we're not always sure that everybody makes that commitment to this amount of volume. So, what we prefer to do is just have Scott as the spokesperson, official, suddenly anointed spokesperson for that committee, just explain it in normal terms for parents to understand, and then you can get through some of the jargon, some of the things that we're required to do as things change in the State House. So, do you mind giving some insight, just comments, even if they're minor, to each of these as we go through? Is that cool? And go ahead and do so. For the first reading, the unauthorized communication devices and pupil safety and violence prevention, what are some things that were driving potential revisions into these?
Well, we met last week, Jody, Sean, and Russ and myself, and we reviewed several policies, not so much for legislative updates, I guess, as just to make sure with the policies we looked at, the policy of practice are running down parallel tracks. And so, the two policies we ended up tweaking were the unauthorized communication devices policy, which previously, I had noted that the school board recommends that these devices not be brought to school, and so we basically changed that to match practice, which the students are required to keep those devices in their backpacks or lockers turned off. And that, as a board, we do support these guys, devices, if they're used for educational purposes during the school day. The other policy that we tweaked, and again, these are posted on the website, they are attachments to the agenda, which is posted on the website, if you scroll down to the bottom of the agenda, there's a couple of PDF documents there, so they're out there prior to and after the meeting for anyone to look at. The pupil safety and violence prevention policy, we tweaked that, I think, a couple of years ago, Malcolm Smith visited with the district to talk about bullying, and one of the things that came out of that was a conflict resolution committee, I think each building has four or five district employees that serve on these committees in each building, so that, that doesn't all, you know, fall on one person. And these committees basically are charged with investigating incidents, coming up with findings and a report, and also recommendation for action. And so, basically, we tweaked the policy to really define the committee's role more specifically than it had been defined before those committees were established. And then also, the subsequent policy for folks, if they feel like they need to appeal any type of a finding. So, again, that's all posted on the website, if anyone wants to look at it.
Great.
I think that covers it pretty well.
Yes.
Yeah, you wanna really stay tuned in to some of the things that are changing in policy, it can be an interesting snapshot to see how we have to adjust to it. I think we do a really good job, the Subcommittee does a really good job for the board, to make sure that that maintenance continues, and it's helpful for people to get an overview. If you look at, just on the first one, it's a short one, if you wanna read that, on the unauthorized communication devices, workplaces are struggling to basically do the same thing with how different communication is done, and kids having cell phones at five years old, and that's how they're communicating and everything else, so it's an interesting topic. So, thanks for those updates. So, just for following procedure, I would like to have both the first reading and one motion, second, and then all of the second reading once, so just to cover those, let's do that first. Can I get a motion to accept the first reading of the unauthorized communication and public safety and violence prevention?
I make a motion to accept policies JICJ and JICBB, sorry, BB as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second to Brian's motion?
Yeah, make a second.
Thank you, Jim. Any further comments? Okay, all in favor, accepting the first readings? Aye, aye, unanimous? Thank you. Alright, back, mic goes back to you, Scott.
Well, I know I spent more time last week in talking about these, this longer group when it was first reading, so I won't take up as much time, since again, you know, they've been posted out on the website for a while now. I guess I'll highlight it, there are two brand new policies, there's a number of revisions, but there is a new policy that wasn't there before, as it relates to prohibiting the school district from recommending an employee or an ex-employee for another job in another district if they are suspected of any type of sexual misconduct. So, that's grand new. And then the other policy in that group that's brand new is the website accessibility and grievance, which is the KEE, that's one that was not there before, and that addresses website accessibility to those with disabilities, which is based on some legislative changes, and here in the next month or two, I think that's gonna be all that with the new website, that's gonna be incorporated into that, so we're very excited to hear about the new website in the near future.
That's great. And, and some of the things, it seemed like the first one, the sort of the no-brainer, why wouldn't we not recommend somebody who has, you know, sometimes there isn't a policy, or there should have been a policy, and the committee is doing a really good job, it says, hey, we, we should be compliant, and we have to add that. So, some of the policies, when we do this, when they present, some of them are brand new, and we need to adjust, sometimes it's going back saying, hey, we should have this, let's go ahead and proceed. So, there is a little bit of an imbalance sometimes, of what it could sound like to somebody sitting in the audience hearing that, so we just want you to understand that some of it is logic and some of it is driven by the State House.
And it's important, because someone could put someone who is a friend, but still employer of the district as a reference, and, you know, we need, you know, district employees to know that, you know, they cannot provide a reference for somebody if that cloud is over them. I mean, it's common sense, but you don't wanna pass someone like that on to, you know, another district, so.
Yep, so it's clear and updated. So, anything else you wanted to call out?
No, I mean, the rest were just updates to existing policies, and again, they've been out there, you know, so I suspect anyone, you know, who's interested has probably looked at them by now.
Great, thank you. So, I can get a motion to accept the second reading, and it's a mouthful, so somebody's gotta commit to this, but the right way to do it is to read all of the letters and go, you ready?
I'll make a motion to approve GADA employment references and verifications prohibiting dating and offending of sexual abuse. And second, we can do both of them.
You can just, you can just, you can do, is that, is that cool? Okay, so sometimes I get away from rules and love rules. It's been confirmed that I can do as presented for a second reading, for the second reading, so you can rather read that whole list.
Okay.
Perfect. I'd rather be teased for going too far, than not going far enough, so if you wanna try to take two, scene two, if you can get a motion for second reading as presented, we'll save everybody five minutes of staring at the floor.
Make a motion for the second reading as presented?
Yes. I will handle it that way in the future, people get to see learning live.
It was too easy.
In a school. Do I have a second for?
Second.
Okay, so Jim, Brian seconded, accepting for the second reading. Any further comments? Alright, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Great, move through that together. Next up, action items. We, these sometimes can be funny, this one is kind of amusing. We need to approve the proposed disposal of the old sports banners.
So, you have in your packet a policy regarding disposal, you have a number of old banners, championship banners from days gone by, that were updated into more consolidated banners that are currently hanging in our gym. They've been taking up some space and collecting mothballs and all the rest of it, so what we're going to do is, I'm going to, if you agree, I would donate those to the Booster Club, and Booster Club will sell those, and then use the proceeds of that back for scholarships and supporting our athletic park.
It's hard to imagine a happier ending.
I need your approval to be able to do that.
So, I am seeking a motion to approve the proposed disposal of the old sports banners.
Could we ask questions before we do this, or not, as an after?
Good practices, we get a motion and a second for discussion, but we're talking about sports banners, so why don't you ask your question?
So, I just wonder how they're gonna sell it, I mean, like, if there's folks that have gone to school years ago, and they're part of that championship, I mean, how are they gonna be guaranteed to be afforded the opportunity to purchase that?
So, we're gonna post them, we're gonna post it for the Booster Club on our website, and it's a first come, first served.
It's a bit high to start.
If you, if you come and you want the 1973 championship, and you get down to see the Booster Club, and you have your, whatever, money in your hand, fifty dollars, then it's in, it's yours for the man cave.
Perfect, coming aye.
How many of these do we have?
Sean?
We do plan on, so people ask us about them, so we plan on putting a price to them, but we wanna give everybody, we wanna do our best effort of getting it out there.
Sure.
Getting it on the website, so that, you know, it's not, I'm gonna talk to Bob, and Bob gives a chance to buy, and so, we're gonna put a price on the championship and the runner-up. And we'll see what happens if we actually have the conflict, you know, we don't imagine we get a whole lot of conflict, but the plan right now is to sell the championship banner for a hundred dollars, and the runner-up banner for fifty dollars.
Because that would be the Booster Club selling it. How many, Sean, do we currently have here, any idea?
We have quite a few. One of, on the, on the nice problems, one of the reasons we did this is we were running out of run. So, we had to consolidate all the runner-up banners, and, yeah, we've been in the gym, it's a good whole band, I mean, so it was just nice. So, that, that's the reason we started with them, and there was a lot of, you know, uneven sizes, some had names, some didn't, so we made everything the same. So, again, our, our plan is to work with the Booster Club to advertise it the best we possibly can, and, you know, five years from now, somebody from the class of 192 was like, I would really like to add that, and we said, well, we really did do our best in January of 2019, tried that possible.
Was sentiments high for some memories here, multiple generational families, just by chance, do you have a name, or who on the Booster Club, somebody who wants to start the bidding high, can they contact?
I think right now, our plan wasn't to do bidding, but, you know, I think, you know, so we're hoping this goes okay, and our big part of that is getting permission from you, and then being able to at least make sure we did a good job of getting it out there, you know, so it was, and what happened, we had people come and ask about them, you know, the instinct sometimes is, here you go, like, it's up in the attic, here you go, but then we recognize the problem with that is, we haven't given anybody the legal offer for it to be done.
Okay, I didn't set that off by making bidding comments, I won't do that again. If people wanna buy, it's not just to remind, the reinforcement that the money's going to scholarships, so it's really nice, nice ending. Alright, so, now, do that answer?
Yeah.
Any other questions, long-term rule? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the disposal of those old sports banners.
And do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Quick second by Jim, so motion, Scott, second Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Beautiful. To the Booster Club. Alright, next up, approve the proposed spending of up to $50,000 from the Centipi Middle High School Capital Reserve Fund for HVAC C controllers, an unfortunate series of events.
So, as we spoke about snow days, and folks who live in town know, some of you probably were out of power for a number of hours, and it were days. We chose the school, lost some power, and in the process of that power coming back on and off, being where we are, so close to the station there, it took our main controller that runs our HVAC and runs our air ventilation units, and it put it down for about eight hours. That drastically reduced the temperature in the school to a very uncomfortable level, I don't say unsafe, but uncomfortable level. Eight hours later, sort of by luck, for whatever reason, it snapped back on. We felt good about it, Matt was able to monitor that from home that night, but over the course of the night, it flickered again, and went on for about another four hours. We came back in again, Billy was uncomfortable, did come back on, we had a claim in with Primax to take a look at that, because what our feeling is now, if the power went out generally, that comes back on within three to five minutes, it's a pretty quick process. But it's staying on for eight hours, and then four hours, we think we might have done something to that controller. And Honeywell's telling us, we don't know, but potentially there's something wrong, the controller's about as big as the platform blocks. Matt and I discussed it, and we spoke with Honeywell, we think the best course of action right now is to have this replaced. And what we are actually replacing is, we have about fifteen smaller controllers for all the air ventilation units, we're gonna run them back to the new control that we put in last year for our boarders. So, we've been, Matt's been doing a great job since he's been here, we're really working on our HVAC system and bringing up more efficiency. You're gonna see a report in your packet tonight regarding the proposal that was done in 2016, we have another one in 2018, we're hoping to come to you in the spring of this year, to talk about facility upgrades, particularly around HVAC, unfortunately, this happened. So, our fear is, if we have another power outage, or something goes wrong with that controller, that could be down for anywhere from three to five days, by now we get a new one and get it wired in, and would potentially have us canceling the school for a number of days. Indoor pipes freezing, up in the ventilation units. Matt, if you'd like more detailed questions, Matt can probably give you more detailed responses.
Yeah, we've been in touch, I've had a little more insight, and then if you got a chance, you can know more about HVAC and empty the light building if you're dream possible. But it did, it's pretty informative. We talk a lot about the, this building and needing to address some things, there's gonna be some dis-maintenance and wear items that get to be fixed there next year, so get a free view of that. If you have specific questions, go for it.
Where's the insurance claim now? What?
We're filing a claim, and they have to come out, and they have to make a determination on whether the power surges did something to that controller, and is that something that would be covered upon?
How old is the controller?
About twenty years old. It's about to just continue, although the fifteen secondary controllers in the building are obsolete, can't get them anymore, unless they're on eBay, and I was told that primary controller, we have got here, replace it there, it's been doing that for a while, if you still have a few of them, so, but it's very obsolete.
Again, we, we were coming to you, hopefully, we're gonna get through the winter, but we're here.
I guess is there a way to, if we do end up getting a new one to protect against a surge, do I add in the future, how do you?
Well, I think one of the things, we obviously have warranty for a while, it would be a newer controller, and if something did happen to it, we'd be able to get parts to be able to fix it.
We have been trying to do inline surge protection, because we are, we've had a lot of hits from, I guess, medicals at the station, so installing inline surge protection, anything new that we install, it's had, of course, all now, or it's something connecting to a, UPS and my stuff. Or if something connecting to it, UPS and those have surge protections. And that would definitely be about it. It's hard work. We have to bring in an opportunity to do surge protection for it.
So this is up to fifty thousand dollars. It's, do you have a feel for a budgetary number or is, how does this work? Do you vote to bid or is?
So we're working with Honeywell and have already used their sort of general, their first controller for our boilers. Again, to be consistent in something like this, we're going to continue to work with them. They were the folks that we're going to recommend later on in the spring to look at their facilities for the long range planning and how to get to operate our infrastructure. Matt, I think you're pretty satisfied when we're using a company called Basics. That's the equipment now that is obsolete and no longer available.
Several of the initiatives that we're doing, this is a duty that they know both sides of.
So is it one supplier, one price or is this a?
So Matt, I think that stuff's kind of proprietary or?
Uh, they're using that basis. So if we decide, like whatever they installed, we decide we're unhappy with the service we're getting. Nice in it, it's not like system capable, we're bringing any sort of automation company that'd be able to work on that and replace it. Get an air controller.
I'm just worried if we should get multiple, and I know there's a timing involved in this and that. It could go down tomorrow, but.
So I think.
The faster we do it, the more expensive.
It's an interesting question, right? Because, and Jim, you're, you know a little more about the solution to that as well. But in my exposure, that typically you sign on to whoever, Basics, or Honeywell, you know.
Siemens, right?
And you kind of continue to use their service as long as you're happy with that, as long as things continue to function. It's not something at this point maybe that we would go out and bid, give them a, kind of down the road a little bit with them. And now they're switching, go maybe to somebody else, maybe we're undoing something we've done. And perhaps, you know, paying for something maybe we don't need to pay for. I don't know if that's accurate on your end here.
We usually go to bid for the lowest bidder, but if we're happy with who we're using and a bid comes in at a good price, we stay with that. But we do get different bids.
Yeah. That's what I'm just, I'm.
From competitive companies, whether it's Honeywell, Siemens, or whoever it would be.
And that's all I'm asking is whether there's a check in the system there to say, all right, this is a reasonable price that we're paying for the services we're getting. But I know that if you're, if we're in a short timeframe, that you're going to have to trade off unfortunately, the ability to do that and keeping the building up and running.
So Matt, when you looked at this a few years ago and we started going out, we entertained a few other people who come in and do that, right? So I think we've gone through that process. I don't know if we would go out and bid just for the, this scope of work, would we?
If we went to the bigger project, they would act as like the lead contractor, but the ductwork installation and all that, they would get bid from multiple contractors for stuff that big. This is relatively, relatively small project, just with devices and subjects. The other plus of it, Honeywell, they already have a testing service contractor. So if they install, who cares about me being on the service contract? If we went with another vendor to install the license, we'd have to sell another service contract to another vendor, potentially tens of thousands of dollars. Or hope for the best. And we'll service them, potentially have to pay a lot of money.
But I think we shot Honeywell. I think that's the original question. We shot Honeywell.
Before.
Before.
But we didn't have a major purchase.
Right. It was more of a service on the service end.
Yeah. Yeah. So how do we determine whether we're being treated fairly on a night large? To me, it's a large dollar item, but in the greater scheme of things, in the HVAC system.
There's a lot more to come unfortunately.
Yeah.
And is that something, Matt, that we have time to? I don't know the process well.
Could. The, another tricky part is we go to another vendor, then what we've lost is the primary controller. And the advantage we have right now is continuing to go with Honeywell is we can use the adjacent help if they install a boiler as the primary controller just to bring the systems already in place. So there's a potential.
There's some.
Another vendor, we have to start from scratch.
There's some savings to be had.
Add another device to the whole system for the primary controller. It's the worst, the worst controller that could possibly be able. So, but.
So, yeah, I did put in that, again, my understanding of this from where I sit, if we go somewhere else and say we went to Siemens at this point, we could be basically undoing what we've done.
Yep.
Paying for it again and going back through a bit of time. So not only paying for the control, but potentially paying for something else that we already gave for.
Yep. Do you know a firm dollar amount? Because up to fifty is.
Now, you were talking with them today.
Yeah. Of course, the lead on the project, we've been working with quite a while, Jeff, who took another job, so doing the lead technician, we're trying to go through those processes. And so we're looking at controllers apart from one major product, so we're just trying to get through that and find that at that price and just hopefully it'll be able to enable us to do.
So just, just to clarify that urgency for everybody who's hearing this, do you have the impact? What's the short term? What's the window for, you know, give us the urgency level for resolving this, whichever way, discussed way we pick? Just to clarify.
So we're hoping to get this done over the Christmas break because it's pretty extensive coming in and running wires through from where those controls are all the way back to the boiler to be, back to Lovers Lane and the high school. So it's pretty extensive work that would have to be done. So really, the only time we could do that feasibly would be over the break.
And just, just be without the automation and trying to have everything running, maybe we'll get that part of the unit to run at a hundred percent open or, you know.
Our efficiency right now is not great.
So by spending this money, do you have a feel for how much more efficient we'll be or the savings we could do?
Well, when we, if, if we get to doing all the things that potentially we're going to need to do, we'll be bringing a lot more efficient and we can actually, in the report, we're going to talk to you more about it probably as we go, but something like replacing the boilers right now to a high efficiency propane boiler would bring us about a thirty percent return.
Thirty percent, close to forty.
Yeah. And so there's some of those things that, we're going to see some significant savings immediately by committing some of those changes. But again, that's down the road, not too far, but down the road.
Yeah. So, ideal format is motion, second, discussion, but we're already deep into it, so when we're answering the questions. I'm concerned about having another vendor. This is part of a larger system and a longer term plan, whether the reason, the individual left or not, there's notes that's plugged in, this is a trusted vendor that we do a lot of business with. Changing that relationship doesn't, those, to me, we've seen many examples where that ends up. We save, you know, four thousand dollars on this and then we have hidden costs of inefficiencies, redoing, new relationships, all of that, that's my concern. So.
You can save now and lose a lot later.
It's not like when we did the roof and getting the bid and then checking the quality work. This is a little bit more of an ecosystem. So I'm concerned about causing downstream problems in our, I love the questions and the engagement of the board. My own one vote is, on this one, I think it's more responsible to go with the trusted vendor and be able to get at, it's messy to get at this during the school break so that the students and staff aren't affected. And we don't make any of these decisions lightly, but I think worried about gray cost or hidden cost. That's where I'm coming from, just having.
Just that, because I think the piece that's important is that, again, we shot Honeywell three, four, three years ago, Matt, when you came in. So we shot them and signed on to their service contract, again, thinking that's, they're our vendor.
That's what I'm trying to restate. And so, and then you have a service contract and then for this, this widget, we have a different service contract and disruption. If we made that level of commitment, been with them for three, four years, that doesn't feel like, and it's a successful relationship in trying to be proven with finances. I'm greatly concerned that we end up causing an awful lot of wasted time to Matt's time, communication time, emails, everything else. This is, I'm concerned that we're going to introduce, handling this way and disrupting a successful partnership, I'm concerned that we have, we're introducing costs even though our intent is good to always be judicial to the taxpayers' dollars. I think this is the smartest way, I personally think this is the smartest way to go. Plus it's going to be, you know, we can, it can be dealt with. The kids all know what happened. Ideally, there'll be no evidence or the staff. So, whether or not you guys like that, I still get to make motions. So I'm going to make a motion. And then we can, if we get a second, we can have a discussion and then we can figure it out from there. Let me get my readers back on. I'm making a motion to approve the spending of up to fifty thousand dollars from the Sunapee Middle High School Capital Reserve Fund for the HVAC controllers.
I'll second your motion, Jesse.
Second from Scott. Now we're officially in discussion. I see some beard scratching. What was the commentary?
I'd, I'd really like to narrow it down to price. I don't, I agree with the process, but I'd like to know what it's going to cost. And I know you're challenged to try to get that through the company at this point, but that would be my only caveat.
I would think that's a ballpark, roughly. I mean, up to fifty is a low. That's just loose. I just think so. I just think that's loose. I agree with what you said of Jesse. I personally like to stay with the same, you already have that good relationship with quality work. The unknown to me is what's dangerous. Quality of the work, the dollar amount. And I think, I think a good working relationship and folks trusting each other, I think is important, it seems like we have.
We did a lot of these pieces in the past too. We had a contractor that did the boiler. We had a variety of chemical contractors. Really, maybe I could.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Things weren't talking to each other, so I thought it was really important to get a company. So all companies I talked to, the companies that can see it from top to bottom, I mean, really solid from the mystery, but can't tell you how many contractors come in, a minute to say it's making sense. Right. We have permission to slowly.
So I like the, I like the idea of the, the cost savings due to the efficiency down the road by using one supplier. So you have me on board there, not an issue. I'd like to try to narrow the price down because the up to fifties, is it twenty-five? Is it thirty? Is it thirty-five? Is it, do we?
Uh.
Not to put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot.
What he's been able to draw out from the work from his previous guy that's really new and all this, but it was pretty safe to say that's big development, I guess, like all the old ones, primary controllers, the ones that we've got very little control over, the old units in the middle of the building, we'd be talking ten of the fifty controls. Definitely get under fifty thousand dollars. He needs to get a closer look at some of the newest, kind of like hogs to do the wiring and all that.
So what you're saying is you may come back and ask for more money? Do the other controllers, if we're, if they're not able to get them?
We have the potential to be looking at controls in the new ones, the middle school and high school. The advantage there right now though is those are questionable HVAC systems that speed drive on, you can control them directly from you. Then it's not all manual.
But it's all manual?
Yes.
And this was part of the project that you were going to bring in the spring anyway, just having that background and reading the extensive reports.
It's a pretty far, it's obviously much easier, which is to save, I guess, once you can change the HVAC in there.
Yeah. So just to clarify for everybody, and particularly for you, sir, asking a great question, this is likely fifty thousand dollars for this stage with the, to get the, the ten replaced and potentially likely more in the future relating to the larger project. So it's really up to fifty is likely fifty to go this far into the ecosystem. I think that's a difference. It helps me a little bit with clarity. Does that help for you?
Yep.
I think one of the things that we're always, it's not too, listen, someone thirty thousand dollars, we're going to spend thirty thousand dollars.
You've always been good.
Yeah.
But also don't want to leave him kind of asking to pull a shot and do what he needs to do.
Are they able to do it over Christmas?
It's a lot of parts over. I'm sure they don't have too many.
People working over Christmas?
Yes. So there's a lot to do there. We could start from anything to replace it. And there, the areas they can't access from the students or.
Yep.
So we can get, you know, at least a pro-able replacement and maybe come in more, you know, add spaces, stuff all over, add to that.
Okay.
Minimal charge.
Okay.
Okay. So we had a motion and a second. Highly engaged discussion. And I'm looking for all in favor on the motion around the fifty thousand dollars for the HVAC. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous?
Thank you.
The other question you didn't ask, I think it's like in the account, it's coming in a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I knew that. It's from the fund of a hundred and seventy-six thousand. Sorry, missed that for the public. I knew that. Thank you for the nudge. Hundred and seventy-six thousand, that's where that money is coming from. The insurance discussion will be an update.
Yep.
As soon as we get that and hopefully that's a very positive story and loops all of us back. Moving on, for action items approved, the proposed purchase of a new student transportation vehicle up to fifty thousand dollars. So beyond the controller, we had a bus.
As things tend to go, it's a going three, so there's not one more to come. But our two thousand and eleven Chevy twelve capacity wheelchair van, a bus, excuse me, is gone. We blew the motor on it. We know we blew the motor on it. There's metal shavings in the engine block. It's not good. They're telling us it's about a ten thousand dollar fix, just to get the parts for that and plus labor. This is the bus that we planned on getting rid of at the end of the year. And working with Brenda, we looked at a couple of different options, another small bus, a transit, a mini van. At this point in time, again, speaking of efficiency, we're running preschoolers in big fifty-one passenger buses with car seats and just not being efficient. Brenda has the ability to latch on to a two thousand and sixteen, no wheelchair lift, fourteen passenger, about seventy-five hundred miles on it, so it's a fairly new bus. It's in Connecticut. We can get that relatively quickly to get up here and get us back into service. I'm asking for fifty thousand dollars, up to fifty thousand dollars to do that. We think we can get that, maybe a little cheaper than the fifty grand. We have a little more exact pricing, but how we get our cameras and inspections and all that, probably in that forty-eight range, forty-seven, forty-eight range. Again, this would have to be, you're just giving me permission to buy that at this point in time. Well, we're going to try to determine that's coming out of the budget. There's no capital reserve funds, no money that's coming from. This is sort of an emergency, we need to get a bus.
Right. So then budget season, do you want to land a little bit more insight on, so that taxpayers understand, so when you have on the HVAC, you've got a hundred and seventy-six, you built that up over years, all of that's fine. When it comes to the dead bus, where does that money really, as you look at that, just, just enough for the taxpayers to understand how this works?
Um, right now, we have money that we anticipate coming in for revenue, tuition, um, candidate, those sorts of things. So instead of at the end of the year, trying to have a larger fund balance, we could actually be taking that to cover us purchase. Or if we don't spend our whole budget, then it's really a, within budget.
So there's a couple, or at least one person from the advisory budget committee, we can talk about that a little bit more. There's some healthy discussions in that, and we can talk about that more in this team meeting, but I think that's helpful for people to understand that we don't have a pool for this. It's relating to revenue and how we manage our finances. And so it'd be the fourteen passenger instead of a bunch of kids in car seats in a giant.
In a giant bus.
Bus that we were going to replace, um, end of the year. So, questions, clarity from the board, do you have what you need to think of all?
How many miles were on the old bus?
Brenda, you told me that, um, thank you, Brenda.
Hundred and ninety-four thousand?
She did that, we're just trying, we could last.
And the new, the new to us one is seventy-five hundred, seven thousand, seven thousand five hundred, right? Other questions?
And you had indicated we were planning to retire that anyways.
End of the year, that was.
So we were going to have to replace it anyways, or planning on replacing it. Any value in that, as it goes?
Uh, we, Brenda does a great job trying to sell us.
Sell it overseas?
Unfortunately, they don't have a high resale price.
Especially with that mentioned, I suspect.
Especially, uh, it's a good camera, really good tool.
Fair enough.
That's, that's pretty good with the miles that we did get out of it. The timing is awful, but a hundred ninety-six thousand miles in a school bus in this land of no flash or straight lines is pretty amazing. Yeah, that's kind of amazing, and we knew we had to replace it anyways, unfortunate that this is where we are. Uh, so with deferring to Kelly and Russ for identifying the funds to pay for it and solving a problem in the near term with the proposal, um, for the used bus to save some money. Motion to approve the proposed purchase of the new bus for up to fifty thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the new bus up to fifty thousand dollars.
Brian gives us a motion, I have a second. Jim on the second, any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good luck, I hope the negotiations are greatly in our shared favor. Thank you for identifying that. Uh, moving forward to information items. SCS Facility Committee, want to kick this off?
You might as well.
Okay, I'm at my back. Fix, fix anything at break. Uh, so, SCS Committee has been very busy. We are receiving feedback that more and more of the community is keenly aware of the project, that this is a ninety-year-old building. There's understanding that there are a lot of exciting, exciting impacts for addressing, um, this building. We've had, I'm trying to think of a list of the different interactions we've had since. I'm averaging four or five meetings a week, so it's kind of a big bore. And I know I just got recorded saying that. So, we've, we've been refining the messaging, um, and a lot of really healthy discussions with the community. Yep, we saw the Memphis Police Chief, Project Sunapee, um, seniors came and visited and toured. The Riverway.
The Open House.
Open House, got a lot of interest in the Open House, if anybody wants to come and bring five or ten friends. There is a kind of a scavenger hunt feel to it, where the initial flyer that we made has been revised. It's like, tell you we get feedback and we use it, lots of feedback and we use it. So I think we got something that's a sharper, more pointed, helpful message. And you'll be able to get some informal, there's no presentation, there's no setting like this, so people who don't want to have that experience, or if you're coming for it, you're coming the wrong place. Very informal, a chance for you to see on your own, have people to help you check it out, it's just much more impactful. The more voters that see the building and understand the things that we're doing, our best to convey in multiple media, it's very impactful, so that you can make your own decision, have your own impression, have your own experience. So again, informal, with munchies, ask questions, take pictures, that's what tomorrow is, just to truly let the community get their own feel and ask their questions, that's the main thing. So we've been very active, the community is, the community engagement is ramping up, which is wonderful. Uh, lots of strong opinions and different sides, it's great to hear how much the community cares about school. And that recognizing that this is an older building and though well maintained, that we're really, we're really at a point where, um, within the next few years, just to use it, we're going to have to do millions of dollars of work. So we're, we're refining with Matt's, it's been a big project for Matt, refining a document that we can share publicly that's much more detailed with the narrative around the things like. I don't have it in front of me, I've left it on my kitchen table, with things like going into the, um, getting into the sprinklers, because we don't have a second egress. It's, it's magnified for us to have our permit, permission to use the building. It's, it's, it's important and critical that we have the sprinklers well. Those need to be replaced because like a lot of things, they're old, they need to be done. To get into it, dry system, go to wet system, we have to open up the roof, which means we have to insulate, which means we likely have to put a new roof on. So all of us can come back after that work is done and not see anything, we don't fix anything around some of the other non-compliance and other issues. But we're taking care of it so we can be open again for a few more years. So we're getting that point where it's an uncomfortable message to have to give, but it's just a factual message. If we aren't going to do the modernization in the project that we're proposing, we're very quickly going to have to spend several million, likely in the next eight years, up to nine million dollars, just to use the building the way it is. And deal with the, um, modulars that are still upfront. So, we're trying to do this in a very factual, leveled, clear way. And we're also really excited to see the engagement in the community and say, we do want to have, we do want to fix this, we do want to look at this. Um, people are asking great questions, having a lot of long conversations about it. So, a thank you to the community for recognizing that we're kind of at a crisis in the sense of how much longer we can use the building and, and getting more people engaged to be a, you know, contribute to the conversation. And there's a whole long list of really positive things that prefer to talk about that are outcomes from it. But we also, we have to be, uh, we understand it's a big project, we don't take this lightly at all. Want to add any kind of?
No, just for, just for tomorrow night, for the Open House, there'll be literature too with positive things, not just the negative things with the NFPA, with the sprinklers, but good things that we're, we're building a, a new school that has modern updates, which is really good. And, and better things in moving education forward in the right direction for the, for the children and for the faculty, if you will. So it's a, it's good, I always say that it's exciting to work on this committee, because it is, it's a, it's a good thing, it's positive. Um, and like Jesse said, with the community, I, I love it, I, I enjoy it. So, be here tomorrow night, and like Jesse said, bring some friends, whether you're former, have questions, um, we want to, we want to let everybody know what it's about, thanks.
Yeah, we're going to enjoy having liberty to talk at more length of the things that we're so excited about that it's going to do. Because it's trying to be responsible and clear, transparent, consistent, which feels like it's, it's, you're worried, a bit of a tough situation and a choice to move forward as a community. But you get to see them, you're yourselves, and hear some of the positives, got a long list of really wonderful impacts for the decades ahead that the address in the school will bring. So again, appreciate the high engagement, we look forward to this accelerating as we, the subcommittee goes towards, so, so what happens next and then we're going to move on is. We, the subcommittee brings the project to the full board, so although I'm the board chair, that's irrelevant, I'm part of the subcommittee, the way the others are, they're subcommittees. So Jim and I are in the subcommittee, we're going to bring that to the full board in January. If the board accepts that, then we go towards the bond, bond hearing, and then that being a warrant article for March eighth. So, and then it did discuss February fourth, a deliberative session, which we know is in New Hampshire, is a fascinating community event. That is, as, in my opinion, as important, maybe more fascinating than voting day. So, uh, January meeting, February fourth, and then March eighth, okay?
What time tomorrow night?
Five thirty to seven thirty.
Thank you.
Yep.
January meeting, January ninth?
January ninth on the, on the meeting, and then, uh, February fourth is deliberative. And then March eighth is voting day. We expect.
March.
High turnout.
Well, this will.
We hope for high turnout and lively, active discussions, uh, within the community as we are, many of us moved here to take part in this wonderful lifestyle and education. The, uh, New Hampshire Department of Education, Sunapee School District Student Support Compliance Report. Could you, um, just give a summary that?
Just a quick, um, really what this, this shows is just the work that Todd and the folks at Student Special have been making compliance. And Todd, if you want to speak to it, but it really just looks at the last, I think it's three if not four years, having no compliance issues with the board.
This is when, in a school, having zeros, and so many of them is a beautiful thing.
Yeah, this is when zeros are a good thing.
So, so if people have questions, Tara will be here, you can always email her, we don't catch her tonight, but it's, uh, a positive string of zeros to see that. So congratulations on the good work you and your team are doing.
There's people here.
Uh, Honeywell, that's the big thick one, we, the elephant, they're all.